Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville this evening. We do have two public hearings tonight, and after that, we will move into our council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please? Counselor Sanders? All right, let's try that again. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville this evening. We do have two public hearings on our agenda, and then we will move into our regular council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Merrick?
Here.
Counselor Whaley?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Bane?
Having a quorum present, I will read in public hearing item number one. Number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 181 Northington Street, Doster Street, 199 Cynthia Street, and 208 Magnolia Drive abated, and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number one? Hearing none. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against resolution number one? Hearing none, I call this public hearing closed. Public hearing number two is a resolution to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to First Watch Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as First Watch 1159. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number two? Yes, sir, please come forward to the podium. If you will come to the smaller podium first and sign your name and address, and then you'll come to the major podium and state your name and address for the council, and you will be able to address us.
Good evening. My name is Julio Morales. I'm the Director of Operations for First Watch Restaurants, and we're in favor of being permitted to sell alcohol on the premises. I don't have any other questions, other than hopefully you guys say yes.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Do any counselors have any questions for him? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone further who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number two? Yes, sir, Mr. White.
Good evening. I hope each one of y'all take this in consideration, because at least it is not a coffee house or a chicken spot, because we, I mean, really, the citizens are probably tired of chicken and coffee, unless y'all gonna just close all the chicken coffins and just open up one place they can just sell chicken and coffee. Thank you.
Mr. White, we are familiar with you, but would you please quickly state your name and address, just for the clerk's records?
Yeah, Reverend Earl White II, 621 West Fourth Street, Prattville, Alabama.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Is there anyone further this evening who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number two? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against resolution number two? Hearing none, I call this public hearing closed. At this time, we will invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. I will be giving the invocation this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we just thank you for the rain. We just pray that you would send it in the amount that we need. We know that you cause the rain to fall on the just and the unjust, and we know that you are God over the weather, that you are God over every detail in our life. We just pray that as we gather tonight, that you would put your blessings upon our city, safety for our first responders, and those who are out there on the front lines taking care of us. We lift up our military, especially as things have been tense in the world realm lately. We just ask that you would take care of our American servicemen and women who are serving our country and who are protecting us and allowing us to go home with nights like tonight where we can gather and we can make concessions and rules and provisions for our local communities. Bless the business that we do here tonight. Help us to honor you in the way that we conduct business, in the things that we say and do. We love you, Lord. We lift you up, because you are deserving, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for our meeting, please?
Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson? Counselor Chambers? Counselor Merrick? Counselor Whaley? Counselor Stritchett? Counselor Bane?
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. The character trait of this month is trustworthiness, gaining the confidence of others by demonstrating integrity and reliability. At this time, we will have an opportunity to approve our minutes from the public hearing and the city council meeting, which were held on June the 17th, 2025. Do I hear a motion to entertain, to approve the minutes? We have multiple motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes from the June 17th meeting, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And our minutes are approved. Yes, sir, we're going to hear from our city attorney, Mr. Andrew Odom, at this time.
Good evening, counsel. Wanted to give you guys a timeline on, and a status update on 107, 106 Seventh Street for the Robinson property. So I'll go back to May of last year. So, May 9th, 2024, the city's building official inspected the structure and then sent a letter to code enforcement with the findings that the structure was dilapidated. That same day, May 9th of 2024, the code enforcement did send the Robinsons a certified notice advising that there was a finding that the structure was dilapidated, and that they could request a public hearing before the council to dispute the findings that the structure was dilapidated. On June 4th of last year, 2024, the public hearing was held in accordance with the Robinsons' timely submitted request. Then on July 16th, a resolution was before the council to declare the structure dilapidated and unsafe, and the council postponed that decision until August 20th, 2024. At the council meeting on August 20th, 2024, the council voted to declare the structure dilapidated, and then on August 22nd, two days later, the city received a letter from the Robinsons' attorney threatening litigation. The next day, the city attorney and the Robinson attorney exchanged emails regarding that letter, and then on August 29th, the city attorney and the Robinsons' attorney further emailed about the cost and repair estimate for the Robinson property. September 5th, 2024, the city attorney emailed the Robinsons' attorney following up on the property assessment. I received no response from the Robinsons' attorney that week. September 18th, 2024, the city attorney emailed again the Robinson attorney, asking for a day and time to meet to discuss the repair proposal. The Robinsons' attorney did respond, and a meeting was set for two days later, Friday, September 20th, 2024. On September 20th, I met with Robinsons' attorney and discussed a proposal for the repair, and also plans to get the repairs started and an agreement formalized. On October 2nd, 2024, I met with the building official, and I went over the Robinsons' contractor's quote and the proposal for repair. The next day, I linked up the Robinson attorney with the building official, providing contact information and the need for the contractor to get interior repairs itemized and to work with a building official, so essentially the Robbins could verify if they do work, that it will be compliant if they complete that work. On November 4th, 2024, I emailed the Robinson attorney asking for a call for an update on their status of getting with the building official. I received no response for the next month. On December 31st, 2024, I sent a follow-up email to the Robinson attorney, asking for an update and if their contractor had put out a plan for the building official. The Robinson attorney emailed me the same quote from September 20th, but no planned or scope of work was provided at that time. January 3rd of this year, the Robinson attorney emailed myself and also the contractor's scope of work for the first time, and then I emailed that scope of work that same day to our building official. January 6th, 2025, the building official emailed both myself and the Robinson attorney, stating that the scope of work was a good plan to start with, and provided the Robinson attorney with further instructions that the Robinson contractor could communicate with him and get started on the repairs. On February 11th, 2025, I emailed the Robinson attorney, asking where he is on a draft agreement. I did not get a response that week. February 17th, the Robinson attorney emails the city attorney and asks myself to draft the agreement. February 18th, the next day, I send the Robinson attorney a draft settlement agreement that outlined the plan for repair. February 20th, the Robinson attorney sent myself a draft with substantial changes to that agreement. February 27th, I responded with a new draft, and I defined substantial completion of the repairs to be completed within six months, and giving the Robinsons one year total from the date they signed the agreement to complete the repairs. I tried to speed up the process so it could be on the March 18th, 2025 agenda. On March 4th, I sent the Robinson attorney a follow-up email due to no response. On April 8th, I send a second follow-up email to the Robinson attorney due to no response since February 26th, 2025. On April 14th, the Robinson attorney sent myself an email with new demands that had not yet been discussed as to this property. On April 16th, 2025, I responded, asking why we're going backwards with these new demands. I received no response over the next two weeks. On May 1st, I sent the Robinsons' attorney an email with the revised requirements, essentially with these four elements, that the Robinsons develop a detailed plan, obtain a required permit, and make good faith progress within six months of the time the agreement is signed, with completion to be done within one year of signing the agreement. I did not receive a response that week. May 7th, 2025, the Robinson attorney sent an email asking to clarify these requests. The next day, I responded with a revised draft of the agreement that clearly outlined what those requests meant. On May 12th, 2025, the Robinsons' attorney emailed his meeting with the Robinsons, May 14th, and would reply Thursday, May 15th. I did not get a response that day. On May 23rd, I sent the Robinson attorney a revised draft, and then on June 3rd, the Robinson attorney sent a prior draft that was executed by the Robinsons, but it did have language within that contract that stated, first and foremost, the council would rescind its action from 2024 in finding the structure dilapidated. On June 4th, I responded to the Robinsons' attorney, outlining my concern about the council reversing its decision before any work at all had been done. I did not get a response that week. On June 24th, I sent the Robinsons' attorney a follow-up email, to which I received no response. And then on June 27th, I see the Robinsons' attorney in public, and I ask him to, has he met with his clients, and I needed an update. And I also informed him that the matter would be on the July 1st agenda, and that brings us here tonight. Any questions?
Do any counselors have any questions for Mr. Odom? Thank you very much for that very detailed and thorough background information for us on the timeline. It's obvious that the city is making a very true faith effort to continue to work on this case. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Odom.
Thank you.
At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding any item that is on tonight's agenda. We will have a secondary comment period later in the night, where you can speak on any item you want to, but at this point, we welcome you to speak on anything we will be voting on this evening. If you wish to speak, we ask that you line up against this wall over here, that you sign up on the podium, and you will be able to come to the main podium and have three minutes to address the council. We do ask that you keep in mind that this is not a dialogue or question time between citizen and council. It is merely an opportunity for you to present information and opinions to us. Is there anyone this evening who wishes to speak? Please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will move right ahead. Mr. Mayor, please come forward with your report.
If I might ask for a trio of points of privilege?
Yes, sir.
And if I might ask one of our local hero chiefs here, Chief Josh Bingham, if he'd come forth. He has a couple of items of very much interest relating to some other heroes of Prattville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. There you are. You're good. No, hey, hey, I'd like to introduce to you, most of you know Assistant Chief Ricky Roberts. He was recently awarded the American Legion State Firefighter of the Year. He began his employment with the city of Prattville on April 22nd, 2002, and since then, he's been promoted through the ranks and achieved the rank of Assistant Chief on November 3rd, 2019. In addition to his administrative duties within the department, he is also the Division D Leader of the Alabama Mutual Aid System, or AMAS. This is what led to him being nominated for the American Legion State Firefighter of the Year by his peers. In September of last year, as Hurricane Helene was about to bear down on the eastern part of the United States, Assistant Chief Roberts began planning for the worst, but hoping for the best. He spent several days ensuring that team members were prepared, equipment was in top shape, and all logistics were taken care of. He completed mounds of paperwork in preparation for a potential deployment, and at 9:00 a.m. on September 27th, 2024, that call came. The message was from a frantic EMA director in North Carolina who was begging for assistance to help rescue civilians trapped by floodwaters in Buncombe County, North Carolina. Within hours, Assistant Chief Roberts put his plan to action, and by early afternoon, the team was on the road to North Carolina. Our team worked tirelessly for 10 days in the small town of Garen Creek, where 13 people had perished from a flash flood. Our team members partnered with firefighters from Birmingham, Calera, Hoover, Vestavia Hills, Mountain Brook, and Mobile to perform wide area searches on an area that was decimated by this hurricane. Assistant Chief Roberts' leadership, preparation, and training brought a lot of closure to the people of western North Carolina, and we are truly thankful for his dedication and service to the city of Prattville. So if you would, please give Chief Roberts a hand. Have applause. You have anything you want to say?
Sure. I'll only take just a second. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. It's been an honor. I'm in my 24th year here. The reason the team and I were able to be successful is the education and the equipment that the city has provided to prepare us to do that. And while I'm humbled for this award, as I was down in Mobile, I have to like the award and the praise and I accept it on behalf of the team. It's truly a team effort, and I'm humbled that you're recognizing me, but the men and women from the Prattville Fire Department across the state, they deserve to be up here just as much as me. So I truly appreciate you and this city. I really do. Thank y'all very much.
All right. Mr. McLean, would you please join me? Counselor Bane, this is Mr. Brian McLean, and I want to give you an update on the true hero that he is. On Saturday, June 21st, at 11:38 a.m., Prattville Fire Department was dispatched to a structure fire at 1275 Huey Street. Our units arrived four minutes after dispatch to find smoke coming from the home and all occupants outside. The crews entered the building and found fire and smoke in the kitchen area, and the fire was quickly extinguished, and the scene was turned over to the Fire Marshal's office. During the investigative process, we found a witness, Mr. Brian McLean, who stated he was riding his bicycle down Huey Street that afternoon, that morning, when he noticed smoke coming from 1275 Huey Street. He banged on the front door, but got no answer. Then he banged on the garage door and found an occupant who was originally asleep, opened the door, and exited the structure. Mr. McLean then called 911 to report the fire, and ultimately saved the life of the victim inside the house. So, Mr. McLean, tonight, I'd like to present you with a challenge coin from the Prattville Fire Department for your duties. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for your service, and
Thank you very much, Chief.
It truly does, yeah. And it truly takes a community. You know, we hear it all the time, see something, say something, but you really lived up to that, and I want to commend you. Thank you for doing that, what hopefully most citizens would do, but just being in the right place at the right time, and for saving that young man's life. So, is anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Indulge me, if I may stand here, so I'm not speaking with my back to the rest of the audience. You managed to do it, Chief, and I told you when you brought it up, I was embarrassed to do this, and especially hearing about Assistant Chief Roberts. I'm really embarrassed to be up here, because I didn't think I'd done that much. But when I talked with my wife about it, and she's a lot smarter than I am, she's, I was thinking, all I did was what any citizen, any neighbor, anybody in Prattville would have done, and Peggy said, that's the point. That's what this gives you the opportunity, you the opportunity to know about. Any one of us could have been there. I just happened to be the one that was there. And I guess, if nothing else, it impressed on me, little actions. I banged on a door, I made a phone call, little actions, but they can have really big consequences, and I am grateful I was there at the time. And, yeah, I'm embarrassed, but I'm also honored. Thank you very much, Chief, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for this. It means a lot to me.
Thank you for being our hometown hero as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I bring Chief Bingham back up real quick? Well, I just wanted to commend you guys from a fire that started from a lightning strike in my district last Wednesday night, and I do appreciate you reaching out to let me know, so I could go over there and speak with the family and pray with them. But I wanted to let everybody know that when I came on the scene, and I just asked you, I said, well, I'm just curious, how long did it take from the time they got the call to the time you showed up on the scene? And you said, well, let me see. You got your phone out, and you said, I think it was around three minutes. And I gotta tell you, that's unbelievable, and that saved a lot of damage. The house is damaged, but it could have been a lot worse. And so, I'm very thankful to you guys. I just wanted to commend you for that, and I'm really excited, too, how the neighborhood is rallied around this family. But thank you again. I just want to make sure everybody knew how thankful I am, and how great we have, as far as a chief and a fire department, all the firefighters there were awesome, and we just thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Yeah, we have great people. I can't say that enough. That's our greatest, our greatest joy there is to come to work and do what we do, but if I might take a moment and just say, everyone, please check your smoke alarms in your house. You have no idea how much of an impact that makes, and, you know, the last thing we want to do is have to do our jobs, but if you guys can just make sure you check your smoke alarms, make sure they work, change the batteries every time you change clocks, make sure they're within a 10-year date of manufacture. It really does help us, and it saves lives. So, thank you very much.
Before you go, tell them about the lightning strike last night.
Yeah, so another two houses last night got struck by lightning, and one was on Lenore Court. The damage wasn't nearly as bad as the house on City Drive, but, you know, it's just those summertime thunderstorms. So, again, you know, there's nothing we can do to prevent Mother Nature, but, like I said, having a working smoke alarm on every floor of your house and in the living quarters, it does make a difference. It does save lives. Data approves that, so.
And I'll add to that, that no injuries, no fatalities or anything. You guys were right there on the spot, and I just pray the good Lord that you guys came there in short notice. So, thank you again to all the other firefighters there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's give everybody your team. Thank you, because, you know, it takes the tools and the time and the talent, and very, very fortunate that council's been very supportive of our first responders in all of our departments, and then we have the guys, the men and women, who are willing to take up the cause there. Also, one more is, I'd like to bring up Jonathan Smith. He is, I'd like to introduce Mr. Smith. Here he comes. He's our new city planner. Just thought I might give him a moment, the microphone, to introduce himself and greet him to Prattville. Welcome to Prattville.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. It's difficult to follow heroes. I'm Jonathan Smith, as the mayor mentioned, and I'm really excited for this opportunity. I can't wait to be a member of the Prattville community in full capacity and serve as your Planning and Development Director. I've been in this line of work for 20 years, after I graduated from graduate school, and worked for a number of cities, very progressive and forward-thinking cities. I know we have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited to get started, and Monday of next week, we'll get that started. So, thank y'all very much. If y'all have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you. All right, great to be here. Thank y'all.
Have a happy fourth, and keep waiting till the seventh.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Happy fourth, everyone.
Well, thank you. Well, good evening, counselors. I think we all received the heavy rain and the lightning and the thunder last night, and also, just as we're coming into the meeting here this evening, but the reports are coming in that we received somewhere between two, two and a half, and three inches of rain in about 30 minutes' time. And now that's just something that's very overwhelming, but as expected, excuse me, with that kind of downpour, we saw some minor flooding in low-lying areas and a few roads briefly underwater. Steph and I met with some residents that were impacted. Thankfully, there was no major damage reported. We will continue to monitor these areas as we move forward. Counselors, if you have any reports about flooding or other damages, please send them to staff and myself. With that, I'd like to speak a little bit about Bent Tree. Bent Tree is, we were able to, our city attorney has worked very diligently to get the easement signed, allowing our city staff to access and evaluate the groundwater system in the Bent Tree area. During this evaluation, our team discovered and removed some debris that was blocking the system. And so, at this point in time, as I went by there just before coming here tonight, and especially after the three and a half, two and a half and three inches of rain, all is looking well there in Bent Tree. But, like I said, we're already seeing some positive results of that. Over the last year, Finance Department and Human Resources Department have been undergoing rigorous training in building a new accounting system for many of the city's record-keeping and financial payroll functions. As of October 1st, the city will transition into this new system with the 2025-26 budget. In the near future, other departments will be trained on the system for a smooth transition. I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work in implementing this system. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our Parks and Recreation Department. As it is Parks and Recreation Month, I appreciate all the hard work that goes into all the quality-of-life events that Parks and Rec brings to our community. As a reminder, it's been said that parks bring our community together. Thank you to the entire Parks and Recreation Department. Last week, we were able to have nine new heroes come in to join our police department team. We had nine new police officers join our team, getting ready to attend the police academy. And I have a picture of this group. There it is, a good-looking group there, and they are not in Prattville now. They're over at, basically, their police academy, and they're going through a lot, but we'll have to say that with the quality of our police department, they prepare them, prepare them very, very well. But, and so, that's from, just shows the quality of leadership that we have here in Prattville. But these additional officers will bring our total number of officers to 98, and tomorrow, we have five, five that are graduating the police academy, and one graduate will be receiving top honors in the class. will be receiving top honors in the class, and we will definitely be bringing them to meet everyone here. These new graduates and officers will be a great addition to our community. So, if you see any of this, either one of these classes coming in, please introduce yourself and make them feel at home. Councilors, I have a picture, there should be a picture coming up on the screen, of Fairview Avenue. And I know there's been a lot of questions and comments about the progress there, but also the layout of the lanes. And on the picture here, you can see that there are turning lanes. Turning lanes are coming, turning lanes are coming, turning lanes are coming. So, I can ask, does anybody bear with this, especially as much as Mother Nature has really thrown at us over the last several months? And one other little additional information about another project, project Spillway, not Spillway, I'm sorry, project, I forgot the name of it, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right there. Vista Point, Vista Point. Two challenges going on at Vista Point is we're waiting on our power poles to be relocated, but then also with the additional water that we've been receiving, a lot of the groundwater is coming out of the hillside. And with the area that they're working on, that has to be just right before they can go in there with the proper equipment. So, those are just a couple of the little challenges there at Vista Point. Councilors, last week, I was honored to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for Central Alabama Community College, as several here were as well. Their Center of Excellence for Information Technology is looking like it's moving forward at really good speed. This Workforce Development Center will help prepare our students for careers in a rapidly changing world. It will strengthen our local workforce, attract new industry, and fuel the economic growth that keeps our hometown moving forward. Councilors, on the topic of education, the city of Prattville has a unique opportunity to evaluate exciting potential educational impact projects for the future. As I've mentioned, Central Alabama Community College has broken ground on the new Center for Innovation and Technology to be located on their campus along Old Ridge Road. Superintendent Woofen came to the last council meeting and described several options for growth and needs here in the city of Prattville for public education. These two future-focused projects bring about the need to enter into a transportation-infrastructure planning phase of potential education development in the Old Ridge Road area. After reviewing the options and discussing, having discussions with Superintendent Woofen, council, I would submit to you to that we need to allocate funds to develop a comprehensive plan for education, location, opportunities for the city of Prattville. The transportation-infrastructure planning phase will be a component of a larger examination of the potential of a new Prattville high school. It is my understanding that Phase One of the planning process will involve a comprehensive elevation of transportation, traffic counts, traffic patterns, roadway capabilities, capacities, identification of upgrades to road networks, traffic signal needs, utility relocation or upgrade or alternate routes to accommodate both the CAC expansion and the potential of Prattville looking at building a new high school to partner in education opportunities for our students. This plan will also need to include preliminary engineering for the new high school. I believe education opportunities for our citizens is a pathway to future, to the future. I'm ready to partner with Superintendent Woofen in this comprehensive plan for Prattville's future education. Councilors, I will await your direction for the next step to take for this partnership on this comprehensive plan for preliminary engineering and evaluation on these opportunities. In the meantime, I will be working with Superintendent Woofen on cost for such a plan. At another meeting, council meeting, I mentioned how our library board is also looking at some additional needs with their building as well. And so, I spoke with the chair earlier today, and they are requesting $100,000 for preliminary plans for another library. That's a lot, and I will wait to wait, I will wait to see what council's actions will be on this, and hopefully, we can have some progress on this in the very near future. In closing, I hope everyone has a safe, family-filled Fourth of July, and please join the excitement at Pratt Park for the Fourth of July. And we have a lot of exciting, excitement going on on that day, but I hope everybody will be safe and family-field events.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your report. Do any councilors have any questions or comments for the mayor? Yes, sir. Mr. Chambers.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, going back to this transportation and infrastructure planning study, obviously, this would definitely be in my district. Right now, personally, I see infrastructure as an issue as it sits right now before any thing's built out there. So, I definitely would appreciate the support of everybody getting on board with this because everything right now, all those neighborhoods, everything dumps onto Old Ridge Road. And there's only one way to get to the interstate, and that's Old Ridge Road. Obviously, there's continues to be some building out there, that's just going to increase it, obviously. Now, I would say that this is not, this is something I'd like to see happen if we do partner, which I would love to partner with the Board of Education and find some solutions. I am an education guy. I graduated from Prattville, went through the school system. So did my kids. My mother was a teacher and a school counselor for over 35 years for the Otoga County Board of Education. So, I just want people to realize, I would love to partner, and if it turns out the school is the answer, then I definitely would think that we would need this study so we know moving forward prior to that we would have a good plan in place and hopefully a good partnership in place so that it would be safe for everybody, including the kids that would be going back and forth to the school, whether it's high school or CAC. So, again, I would, I would reach out to all of you guys, and I would appreciate your support on getting this done. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I think, say, at this point in time, we do not know what the cost of this is going to be, and, but we can, once we get the nod to move forward, we'll be glad to come back. And one recommendation I would have, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, is utilize some of our education funding to carry on this study, because it's going to be a very, it's going to have to be a very in-depth study on traffic patterns and all the needs in that area.
And I would definitely be interested in if they could add a part of the study as to where we are right now as infrastructure, regarding that area. If it, as it sits, I again think that that's, there's still an infrastructure need right now. I'm not sure how many people would argue with me on that one, but I can assure you that people in District Three would not. So, if, when we get to that point, I'd appreciate that part of the study as well. Thank you.
Do any other councilors have any questions for the mayor? Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley.
And this may be for you as well, procedurally. So, this conversation originated two weeks ago. Here we are again with a request that, that we, I guess, agree or approve to move forward with this. So, I guess procedurally, what do we need to do? I don't want to wait two weeks and then let's say, oh, we need to move forward with this. I feel like that, like Council Chambers just stated, if, I mean, there are going to be some decisions that we have to make on partnering and to what extent with education to move education forward. With that in mind, we need to know upfront what kind of infrastructure needs we're going to have to undertake in order for that to happen. So, I don't want us to go, hey, Board of Education, we're going to enter into a funding agreement with you and help you build a school. I'm not saying that's what we're doing, but hypothetically, we're going to, we're going to help you build the school, and then, and then we have a traffic study, and they go, oh, by the way, you're going to have to five-lane this all the way to 31. We need to know that before. So, procedurally, how do we go about getting that authorization for those pricing, I guess, to be determined without coming back in two weeks and saying, again, we need to move forward with it?
We will have to vote on a resolution or an ordinance in order to authorize the mayor and the proper departments to do that, and we're going to have to have some paperwork done before we have that ordinance written. There will have to be cost-effective and a specific group that we're entering into a contract with. We can't just say we authorize the mayor to find somebody to do a traffic study, we're going to have to have a company that we've entered into. So, once the executive office gets together the paperwork and gets with the clerk and makes up a resolution for us with a possible fee schedule and that type of thing, that's when we could actually enter into us voting to approve that. So, that will be the procedure that we will follow.
Okay, so, and the only reason I bring that up is, so it's not on us until it comes to us?
That is correct. We do not have the power without, as a group, authorizing that.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, I hope next meeting, we could see some type of request for a resolution or ordinance come before us so that we can go ahead and support the decision to move forward with that study.
Steph and I will, will move forward with gathering information, coming back with a recommendation on who to work with on this, and hopefully have as close of a cost estimate for this, for this work as possible. And so, I feel like I have some marching orders.
Yes, sir. I feel like that's exactly what Council Whaley was, was saying at this point, while we're not making a formal resolution, we are making a request to the executive department with, move ahead with getting a resolution for us. Mr. Oakley, did you want to jump in here?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I was just in case you needed-
Okay, I just saw you over to the side and wanted to make sure that we weren't missing you. Okay. Any further questions or comments for the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson.
We are very appreciative of Dale and his staff for getting Bent Tree taken care of. That's, that's, everyone can breathe a sigh of relief having that resolved, so we're grateful for that. You mentioned the parks. Where are we, do you mind giving us an update with NHP?
There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting earlier last week, and some of the potential contractors showed up, and they will have another meeting on that. When I have a date on when it'll be out for bid, you'll be one of the first to know.
Any further comments or questions for the mayor at this point? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your report. At this time, we will move into reports from the council on special committees. Councilor Sanders, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Jackson?
No.
Councilor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Strickick?
And I have none. Tonight, we do have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that could possibly fall on tonight's consent agenda include Resolution Number One, which is to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 181 Northington Street, Doster Street, 199 Cynthia Street, and 208 Magnolia Drive abated, and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Two is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 125 Warwick Drive. Resolution Number Three is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for removal of garbage and rubbish at 325 New Moon Drive. Resolution Number Four is to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 719 Cranbrook Court. Resolution Number Five is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 141 Bath Manor Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expense pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Six is to authorize the city attorney to file a release of garbage and rubbish liens on 1946 Chancellor Ridge Road. Resolution Number Seven is to authorize the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding or an MOU with the Otoga County Commission for the utilization of Rebuild Alabama Act or A.A. funds for Project RA-ACP-01-02-24 widen and resurface of County Road 12, Old Ridge Road, from US 31 to 1.9 miles east of US 31. Resolution Number Eight is to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 132 Lina Drive, 170 Imogene Street, and 141 Bath Manor Drive to be unsafe in a public nuisance and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. And Resolution Number Nine to authorize an agreement regarding the property at 106 Seventh Street. And Resolution Number Ten is to certify Michael Whaley as the District Five Counselor for the 2025 to 2029 Quadrinium. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted, allowing us to move into our regular agenda items for this evening. Item Number One is a resolution to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to First Watch Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as First Watch 1159. Councilor Chambers, will you introduce the resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas First Watch Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as First Watch 1159, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license for a business located at 2301 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which is a restaurant. And whereas a public hearing was set by Resolution Book 2025-A, page 153, on June 3rd, 2025, and held July 1st, 2025 at 6:00 p.m., and at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such resolution. Now therefore be it resolved, excuse me, that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to First Watch Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as First Watch 1159 for the business located at 2301 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number One? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number One, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number One is adopted. Resolution Number Two is to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget and authorize the release of funds for the weatherproofing and painting of the outside of 124 West Main Street at a cost not to exceed $94,800. Councilor Sanders, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified for the weatherproofing and painting of the outside of 124 West Main Street, and whereas Construction One Incorporated has the expertise to complete said project at a cost not to exceed $94,800. And whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, said project is a public works project. And whereas Section 39-2-2 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended allows contracts for public work projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the FY 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase general fund/business license $94,800. Increase facility maintenance and building maintenance bank $94,800. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Construction One Incorporated for said weatherproofing and painting services at a total cost not to exceed $94,800, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget lined out on facility maintenance, building maintenance bank. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Two? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Two is adopted. Resolution Number Three is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of two 2025 Ford Maverick trucks through the state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated for urban management at a cost not to exceed $59,174. Councilor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase two 2025 Ford Maverick XLT Crew Cab trucks, and whereas said trucks are available through state contract number MA22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $29,587 each, and whereas these are budgeted expenses in urban management. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in amount not to exceed $59,174 for the purchase of said trucks are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and so-
approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item urban management, capital at lay. So moved. Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Three? Counselor Merrick?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I left my mic on in that, so. Mr. Dale Gandy, would you mind coming down, please, sir?
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you for being here and everything that you do for our community. Just had, uh, some of my constituents had some concerns over recent purchases of some of the city vehicles. Can you elaborate a little regards to the use of the vehicles, just to justify the need and expense?
Sure. Thanks. We have a need for, for these two, and we, we're also requesting on Resolution Number Five, another one for public works. But these two specifically are gonna replace two 13-year-old trucks we use for mosquito spraying. Trucks are getting old, get some age, having some maintenance issues. So this will be replacing those mosquito spraying trucks. And then the one for public works will be replacing a 13-year-old admin vehicle that is same way getting, get some age on it, and we're gonna place it with this.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any other councils have any questions for Mr. Gandy, or any more discussion on number three?
Just curious, what's a normal lifespan of a truck like that that you guys like turn over? Just curious.
Best case scenario is like every five years. Obviously, we're not there yet, but we have made a lot of strides over the years. These two mosquito trucks, I guess, kinda low on the totem pole, you know, with replacing everything else over the last 10 years or so. And we're kinda to that point now, where we're trying to get everything kinda upgraded. And, but I expect these trucks to be in service for more than five years, just because they, you know, pretty much are worked through the summertime, four days a week through the summertime, but it's not something that we will drive every day, you know, all year.
Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number Three? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Three is adopted. Resolution Number Four is to set a public hearing to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at Grooby Airport Road with Aviation Way, from FAR Forest Agricultural and Recreation to T1 Manufactured Home District. Counselor Sanders, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Ronald C. Johnson is the petitioner for the property described in Attachment A, and whereas said property to be rezoned is located inside the corporal limits, corporate limits, at Grooby Airport Road and Aviation Way, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the approximately 1.01 acres property farm from FAR to T1, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on May 15, 2025, and whereas on June 12, 2025, the Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of said property as described in Attachment A, be amended from FAR to T1. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for August 5, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. on the second floor of 124 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama. So moved. Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Four? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Four is adopted. At this point, Counselor Sanders, will you read in the ordinance portion of it, please?
Yes, ma'am. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and the zoning map are hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A from FAR to T1, and that this proposed ordinance and synopsis were advertised for two weeks in the Montgomery Advertiser, a newspaper of general, general circulation within the corporate limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council, at its public hearing on August 5, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and recommended by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on June 12, 2025. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved. Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, this ordinance will hold over until after we have our public hearing, which will be held on August the 5th, 2025. Number Five is also a resolution to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of one 2025 Ford Maverick truck through state contract number MA-22000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the Public Works Department, at a cost not to exceed $29,587. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this for us as well?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase one 2025 Ford Maverick XLT Crew Cab truck, and whereas said truck is available through state, state contract number MA-220000003128-6 from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $29,587. And whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Public Works Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $29,587 for the purchase of said truck are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item Public Works, capital at lay. So moved. Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Five? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Five is adopted. Resolution Number Six is to authorize the City of Prattville to submit an application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, ADECA, for program year 2025 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas ADECA is accepting applications from municipal governments for program year 2025 CDBG funds made available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas the City of Prattville has identified community development needs in College Heights area, as shown in Attachment A, and determined that there is a critical need to improve the street sewer line, sewer lines, where high concentration of low to moderate income persons reside, and whereas the City of Prattville agrees to provide for the long-term operation and maintenance costs of said project, and whereas a public hearing was held on May 27, 2025, informing the public of the availability of the funds and identifying potential projects that the city intends to address with the funds. Now therefore be it all that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the submission of the program year 2025 grant application to ADECA requesting $500,000 in CDBG funds. Be it further resolved that the City Council commits to matching funds of $204,235 towards said project, if funded. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Six? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Six is adopted. This concludes the items on tonight's agenda. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present. We will ask that you would line up over here against this wall and sign up on the podium. You will have three minutes to address the council. While you're lining up and signing up, I'm going to call for a two-minute recess. If y'all will excuse me for two minutes, we will reconvene in just a moment and begin with comments.
Thank you for giving that, me that moment. Before we do get started, quickly, there is a brown purse laying in the ladies restroom, so if anyone is missing their brown purse, you will please want to get that before we lock up the building this evening. All right. Please go ahead. Name and address for the council, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Diane Rowling, 119 Magnolia Drive. I want to let everybody know, if they have it even, if they haven't seen on Facebook, I had an incident happen last night. I had just gotten home, I was putting up a camera, and District Two candidate, Cornelius Smith and his wife, Johnny Davis and another individual, I did not know. I went out, was putting my camera up, and Johnny started walking by. Well, let me say this first. They know that I support Marcus. We've had that discussion. I had a Marcus Jackson and a Dennis Mullins sign in my yard. Okay, well, Cornelius was gonna come up there, he acted like he wanted to talk to me. I said, "I don't have anything to say. Please go on." Well, they kept on and on. Johnny Davis, well, they, let me back up. I was getting up on a, on my ladder to put my camera up. Well, they hollered, "That's Diane Rowling! That's Diane Rowling!" Everybody started yelling my name. Well, then, all of a sudden, Johnny Davis started making comments. I said, "I don't have anything to say to you." Well, they kept on. I got my camera, I held it up, facing them, recording the incident, and that's the only thing that made them leave. I said, "Get out of here, you're harassing me. I don't have anything to say to y'all. Something needs to happen with this stuff." I went, I talked to Chief Thompson this morning, shortly after 8 o'clock, to find out my options. I do plan on going in the morning. There are all kinds of voter intimidation charges that can be done, and something needs to be done about it. I know there's state and federal charges. I will be filing them tomorrow. I just wanted to let everybody know. I don't know who the fourth individual was. There was four of them, though. And it has been out on social media, and as of 6:30, there's been 5,600 views of the video that was put out.
Thank you, Ms. Rowling. Yes, ma'am. Who's next? Is that you, Ms. Robinson? All right, please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
My name is Barbara Robinson. Live at 123 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. I have two questions. The first question will be, I would like to know, from the last meeting I asked about our historical sign for the North Highland Park, I would like to know, have anything been put in process for that sign to be put in our park before our school reunion? Our school reunion would be July the 24th through the 27th. And I, I would just wanna know that first.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to address that?
It is in the process, but I do, I do not believe it should be installed before you're, the date you're wanting it.
I have an issue with that, simply because when I talked to you early part of the year, when I asked about it, you said that the money was allocated for that sign, but it was given to a different group instead of the North Highland Memorial Community Center Park Committee. So the group that has the money, if they could put up one sign, why they couldn't put up the other signs? Because they was allocated the money for North Highland Park, um, I'm sorry, College Hike, and First Baptist. First Baptist did get their sign, but the rest of us did not. I don't understand that.
There are several signs in the works, from the junior high to some other ones, but it's almost a little bit like the traffic light up at Terra and McQueen Smith. I know, I think, whenever we initiated that project, I think it was gonna be ready in April, and here we are now, and all they have is the poles up. So sometimes it's supply change, and sometimes it's, it's some other challenges, but it, the signs have been ordered.
Okay. My next question is, I know changes can be made, I understand that. And when we file every year for our contributions, now they went back and said that what we had to do, we had to show proof of everything that we spent, which is no problem, which we was able. When I talked to Mr. Oakley, we brought back what he asked for, and he felt like everything we done. I just wanna know, is it just North Highland only one that's being treated this way? Or this, everybody that you all support and give donation to, contribution to, do they have to show proof of every nickel that has been spent for what they're asking for? You know, you have to line out, you got to show proof of everything, for everything that you say you're doing. Is that just for North Highland to be doing this, or is it for any other organization that y'all support?
Our finance team that does all that is very consistent, consistent across the board.
I just wanna know, because it was just a shocker, because I just felt like, you know, first of all, if the rules had changed a little bit, we should have been notified. But thank God, we have our records. And plus, most of you all, everything that we have, pretty much you come. So you know we not lying about what we represent, whatever we turn in for the financial report. We have proof, because you all be there. You know, we, we don't just misuse the money. But I seen something, I know there's some organization, they getting the same amount we're getting, and they been in, they been, ain't been in, uh, org, just have not been in office as long as we have, and they getting the same amount of money. So how they get just as much as we get, and they're not doing half of what we do for the communities?
Well, again, I'd be glad to talk with you, and we have had conversations. I know a lot of times, y'all have turned in some requests for paving the parking lot, fixing the roof and bathrooms, and, and I've told you time and time again, that is not something that the monies you get from the city can be utilized for. It has to be a certain criteria. And, and, you know, we've, we've had this conversation many times, and, and so y'all, y'all have been informed, and I'm sorry you decided to come up here tonight, but, but rest assured, Daniel Oakley and Carla G. Sims are very thorough and very fair.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
Okay. I'm still looking for that sign.
Now, if you want to speak again, we'll let you get back in line after everybody. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council.
My name is Alyssa Brown. I am from 270 Clubview Dry, Drive. I noticed that there was something said, it was like the wording of last meeting that kinda just threw me off a bit, about how we fund things, and how it seems like it's placed on the taxpayer to approve of these things, and like, we have to, we have to approve of this no matter what. So the question I have is not why did this not pass, it's why did this fail? Time and time again, the middle and lower classes are disproportionately impacted by taxes. Flat-rate taxes are not proportional or equal. Instead of shifting the tax burden to the 1%, the burden is placed on the working class, the people who barely make it by paycheck to paycheck. These people have kids. These are people who have kids and have to pick between a doctor visit or school clothes for their child. People who work three jobs to pay their rent, the people who are overworked and underpaid, who lose their sense of self, and the reason they weren't, wanted to work in their profession in the first place. People are under the impression of needing to make more money, so the systemic, systemic issues set in place no longer affect them. The reality is, is that this, it's still affecting them the same. Isn't that why y'all increase your salaries? The solution is simple. Place- The solution is simple, place the tax burden on the rich, the rich who benefit off the exploited work of the working class. Sorry, so, not really sorry, but this all came from me pulling twenty-two thousand records from the tax of property taxes, and my findings is that Prattville has four times the amount of market value rate than all of its other municipalities. How can a thousand, one thousand square foot, single-family home, which could be a rental, but might default to the 20% tax bracket, that also falls in line with what Walmart is under, right? A multi-billion dollar corporation. Okay? You want to talk about millage rates, you want to talk about, you know, like, a penny of this, a penny of that, and, you know, by the way, the, sorry, let me find this, the imposition of the additional tax from Section 38 through 92, it only, it isn't a full dollar of the hundred dollars, it's only 22 cents, okay? It's not a full dollar. And so, you know, we have this huge advantage to maybe, it's, again, the millage rate isn't gonna cut it, it's not gonna cut it, okay? You can increase that so much, it's not gonna make a huge difference. What's gonna make a huge difference is you separate another tax bracket for these wealthy corporations, these hot people that make so much money that they don't know what to do with it. You put them in a separate tax bracket, you can increase funding for a lot of things. You don't have to worry about, "Where's the school funding?", or, "We're gonna have to close another school, we're gonna have to close the art program, we're gonna have to close all these things." You can fund another library from that. You know, instead of placing the burden on these working-class people, y'all can put it on the people who we work for, who exploit us, our work, for their wealth. So, with all that to say, where's the $100,000 for the library gonna come from? Like, where are we gonna get that funding from?
Ma'am, this is not a time of dialogue, it is a time for you to present information and opinions to us, and so, we're welcome to hear your opinions, but as far as that, obviously, no type of decision has been made.
Thank you. Your reasoning says it all, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council, you will have three minutes to address us.
Gwendolyn Townsend, 102 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama, Mayor, Prattville City Council members, and Department of Code Enforcement. I, Gwendolyn Townsend, Representative of 113 Isom Street, request the extension for repairs for 113 Isom Street. I am writing to respectfully request an extension for the property located at 113 Isom Street, Prattville, Alabama. As to, as the representative of the property, I commit to preserving and restoring the significant structure of my grandmother's house, Elmira Townsend, that provided love throughout our family and neighborhood for many years. Due to unforeseen delays, financial constriction, being that I am a single mother, single grandmother, relying only on my fixed income, I am asking for additional time to secure property fund, proper funding, to complete necessary repairs to bring the property up to code, and make available and able me to live in the home, hoping to improve the property value in this area. I believe that with this extension, I can ensure the property's preservation and contribute to the community's well-being. Preferably with an extension, it will allow significant time for the remodeling of this property. I am committed to working diligently to meet the requirements and ensure the property's restoration. During this time, I am seeking funding to help me to make this happen. I will appreciate the opportunity to discuss this matter further and provide any additional information you may require. Please do not hesitate to contact me at gwendtowen819@gmail.com, or my phone number, 334-235-7767. Thank you for your consideration. Considering this request, I look forward to your response. Sincerely, Gwendolyn Townsend, the Townsend family.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Did you submit this in writing or email form as well, or are you just, is this the first we're hearing about it?
Well, have, when you say, "Have I submitted it in writing?", this?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Crockett. Please state your name and address for the council.
Sure. Jamie Crockett, 396 Sidney Drive South. Good evening, Madam President, councilors, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate y'all having an ear for a little guy like me, quite literally, little guy. I've got an existing relationship, established relationship with a number of you on the council, some of you I know better than others. You certainly know that I'm a local property owner, a local business owner. My wife just so happens to sit on the Board of Education, and that may indeed be why I'm here talking to you today. I've got three children, one of whom has graduated through Prattville High School, the other two are still in Prattville schools at this time, and you've been presented with a lot of evidence over the recent weeks that, and months and years, that funding for our education system is an issue. All of you, it's election season, yay, right? Hip, hip, hooray. And all of you, save the lucky one, have an opponent, so now you've got a race to win. And each one of your opponents, at least, that I have seen, have already made education funding a part of their platform for what they're gonna run on. And so, whether you wanted it to be or not, funding for our public education, specifically the Ataga County Board of Education, will be on the ballot in August. And there is now an opportunity for you as sitting council members, because your opponents are going to flock to social media, they are going to knock on doors, and they're gonna tell each of your constituents that they support funding public education. They support giving money, giving more money to Prattville schools. They support building a new Prattville High School on campus next to CAC. They will tell folks that, but you are sitting in those chairs right now. You have an opportunity, come this August, to run on campaign promises kept, okay? So, this is me reaching out to each of you. I like all of you that I know well, okay? And I don't know some of you well, and I would like to get to know you better. But everybody's gonna be running on education. Are you going to step in the ballot box in August, running on your own campaign promises versus their campaign promises? Because I can tell you, as a voter and a non-politician, people get tired of campaign promises. People want to vote on action, and you have an opportunity right now to take action, and you get to stand on your record in supporting public education. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cooper?
Karen Cooper, 804 Cobblestone Curve. Normally, I come up here with notes, but the library was brought up tonight, and I just had, I had to get up and say something. So, I know this is not a conversation, y'all know how much I love the library. When I went to the May meeting, the May Library Board Meeting, there was no discussion of a new location, or that they had found anywhere, it was, actually, there was no discussion of pretty much anything at that meeting. I'm really hesitant, I would just, I would request that I'll be very hesitant in funding them $100,000 when we don't even know a location for a new library to go. We haven't seen the fiscal reports that they had from last year, and they had originally asked for level funding, and if I remember correctly, they asked for money again after that, and now they're asking for the money for the building to be built. I absolutely want a new library, I absolutely want us to have a fantastic library system in this county, but please don't throw money towards something until we know many, many more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Is there anyone further? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I'm Jessica Hayes, I'm at 1954 Chancellor Ridge Road, Prattville, and I just was getting up here to thank one of the speakers, the young lady Alyssa, I believe. She's spoken now at two city council meetings, and I wanted to applaud her, because when I was that age, I was not standing up at a city council meeting. I was not understanding tax rates and the corporate tax system of my local city and municipality. That is who we need in this world, and that is who we need in this community, and I want to applaud her for her courage and bravery for standing up and speaking truth to power and holding power accountable. That is what we need more of in Prattville, and I appreciate so much everything she said.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Once again, Reverend L. White II, 621 West Fourth Street. I want to say thank you to that young lady, 'cause it took a lot of courage for her to get up and speak truth. With that being said, and I'm gonna stay on the topic with her for right now, last week she was, she asked a question about, "How much money do Prattville pay to the Board of Education?" Mayor said 1.6 million. What she, what Mayor didn't say, and you took it out of context of what that young lady said, was how much you paying in the education system to educate our kids. 1.6 million dollars went to build that stadium, not to educate our kids. So, I wanted to correct that, because it wasn't corrected last week. The second thing is, you know, I came up here and I talked about, we need to do things to, you know, improve the homelessness, build some mental health facilities, get mental health facilities, not, you know, putting our mental health personnel in jail, or sending, or putting them in a vehicle and putting them on the other side of 31, that's not solving our problems. That's pushing the problem over to Montgomery, pushing the problem over to Elmore County. We got to do better than that. And as you said, heard her say, the pre-capital, we third, and what she didn't tell you, we the third rankings in pre-capital here for us wealth in the state of Alabama, Ataga County is, but yet we don't show it. We'll push everything off to everybody else. We got to do better. I didn't serve 25 years, 11 months, 11 days, you can frown, you can make them funny faces all you want, but I did not serve 25 years, 11 months, 11 days in other people country to free them for combat deployment, to free them for us to come back and treat our own citizens like dirt right here. I didn't do that, and I hope y'all get serious about that, and don't give the mayor a blanket budget every time you come up here. We need specific, we need detailed specificity about what that money being spent on, not a blank check. We too often give him a blank check, and then when the citizens come up here, you look at them just like you're looking at me now. Don't give them the answer. But yet, we can move on certain things, but we can't move on other things. It's no reason North Highland Park should be kicked around like that when Pratt Park and more, um, pickleball courts was put at the other park over there, off of Fairview Avenue. We got to do better for all people, not just some. And the last thing, and I hope, building a new high school is important, we need that, but we need to get behind it, and we don't need to give a blank check, we need to know specific, we don't need to be writing a blank check saying, "Hey, you can do this", we need to know what we spending our money on to get that new high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ms. Rowling?
Okay. I wanted to come up here, I thought about some other things. There are, the individuals that were involved in the incident have been sitting back here laughing, they thought it was funny. They think they are above the law. I know they're your friends, I know they know they can get by with stuff with you, Mayor Gillespie. I know there's ways to go above it. Would you please stop this? Because if you can't stop it at this level, I will go to a higher one, that's all I've got to say. But they are sitting back there laughing, they think the whole incident, coming to my house, harassing me, they think it's funny. I'm sorry. I worked in the court system, they're not gonna intimidate me, they're not gonna scare me, and they're not gonna bully me. All they're doing is making me angry, and that's not a good thing. So, would you please, if you can't handle it, like I said, I promise you, I can find somebody that will. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Langley, please state your name and address for the council, you will have three minutes to address us.
Hello, my name is Thea Langley, and I live at 221st Street in Prattville. As you all are aware, I'm sure, I am running for city council, District Seven, since I was redistricted out of District One in, when was it, November. I feel like there are several things that are on my mind for our citizens, and I think Diane has hit on some of them today or tonight, is the respect factor that is shown to residents. I think residents feel that they're not heard, they're not, they don't feel like they're respected by you, they don't feel like they are heard by you, and I think that is something that, as a city, it sets the tone for the entire citizenry of Prattville. I know with the Robinson situation, Mr. Stritchak, you brought up the safety situation, that if a child accidentally or intentionally went into the home of the Robinsons, the dangerous, I think you verbiage it as if they leaned against a pillar, you know, that it could fall. And so, on Facebook, I have been doing some video posts, and have people to send things to me that they're interested in, you know, me kind of looking into. And so, one of the things, I went down to the Spillway Park, and I know that you guys know, obviously, because you put up the fence, the temporary fencing during the parades and during the festivals, but there's like an eight to 10-foot drop right there to the right of the Picker House, and I'm sure you guys know this, I don't know why there's not some sort of permanent fencing there, but I think that is definitely something, if we're talking about, you know, dangerous situations for the kids, absolutely, that would be one of them. So, that is something that I think is important for, Mayor, I know that you are, you want the safety for our children in our community to be a number-one priority, and I think that is absolutely something that is super easy. I don't really know why a sign, honestly, is such a big deal. We create, we build our fences, you know, here, we have a wonderful group that is able to do that, so I don't understand, honestly, why a sign for North Highlands is such a big deal. I mean, is it a big deal because it's North Highlands? I don't, I don't understand. The other thing that is really, really on my mind, and Jamie, you hit the nail on the head, that you guys have had, this has been an extra year, I don't know how you verbiage that, but you guys have had an extra year in your term, and you've had five years. You've had five years to support education in the city of Prattville, and we get 25% of 25% toward our, we do, we get, we get the private security, I get all of that. There's a wonderful breakdown on social media, but what it boils down to is...
Ms. Langley, if you could begin to wrap up, your timing is running out.
Absolutely. Thank you for the respect of requesting that. What we really give from the city of Prattville is right at $800,000, it's not 50% of a penny. That is manipulation of the facts, that is deceitful in presentation of what that looks like, and it's par for the course. We need transparency. We don't get, you, you talk about it, but we don't get it. We don't get it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name and address for the council, you will have three minutes to address us.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Levandlin Robinson, and I'm a resident of 118 Cosby Court, Prattville, Alabama, and I'm here to address the council and the Honorable Mayor Gillespie, and all of my fellow citizens here in Prattville, Alabama. I'm not here to talk about 106 Seventh Street, actually, because I know that my fellow citizens here are smart enough to read between the lines of the wonderful presentation that was made by our city's lawyer, and I do want to thank him for that, and I will address that matter at the next council meeting when I come before you, because I know that that presentation was wonderful, but I want you to be smart enough to read, 'cause anybody can come in and make themselves look good. However, I do want to say thank you to my mayor for showing up for our Juneteenth parade, thank you for showing up to my, to our Chief Thompson, thank you for showing up for our Juneteenth parade, and... and to my counselor, Mayor, uh, Marcus Jackson, for showing up for our Juneteenth parade. Juneteenth is, is an important holiday to all citizens of Prattville. And I want to thank you for being visible, Mayor Gillespie, for showing up and being in front. Thank you, uh, Counselor, Counselor Jackson, and to, and to Chief Thompson for, for letting all citizens of Prattville know that Juneteenth is an, is an important holiday and know that I will be back at the next city council to address what wasn't addressed concerning 106 Seventh Street. And I know that you all are smart enough to read between the lines of what wasn't said. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Dennis Mullins, 521 Weatherby Trail. Want to start off, and we'll make it light. Happy Fourth, everybody. And then also, I will be 64 years old on that day. So happy birthday to me. So going to miss, uh, what Ms. Diane was talking about. There seems to be a culture of this right now. We are in an environment in the election season, and I can honestly say, I've been targeted myself already. There's been a post that come out that was very disturbing to me and my wife. The flip, the script was flipped. The script was flipped, accusing me and my wife of accosting a realtor in a subdivision, saying that how I was unprofessional, how it was unprofessional me to do what I did. But let me tell you what actually happened. And the investigation is still ongoing. I was accosted by a D.R. Horton superintendent. I was in there in a public street, just taking some pictures of some of the houses. This young man had only been there three weeks. As I was taking pictures, he come aggressively towards me, saying, "We know who you are. You are not welcomed here." We were told that if we have any issues with you, to call the police and they would take care of me. This young man did not know me. I did not know him. He'd only been there for three weeks. A D.R. Horton superintendent that had come in from Georgia. So how would he know me? How would he say, "We know who you are"? Unless there was a culture from somewhere in this city that caused him to say that and to call the law that they would take care of me. The investigation is still ongoing. The word whistleblower is coming. We're going to find out how this happened. I even asked the chief about it in one meeting. I got right up in his grill and saying, "Chief, are you targeting me"? That's what I said. "Chief, are you targeting me"? So don't think it don't go on. I haven't said anything about it. I've been keeping, till we get the investigation all situated out, and we'll know where this came from. And I have no doubt it came from within inside this city government somewhere, an employee, city government, somewhere. So what's happening? I'm not that kind of guy. I don't go that way. That's not in my DNA. My DNA is love, kindness, encouragement. That's who I am. That's who I plan to be. That's who I will always be. So it's forthcoming. The information will be coming. And I'll be back up here again to let you know. To let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address for the council, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Counselor Patrick Lucas, Senior, 1211 Calabacrossing, Prattville, Alabama. The trait, the trait of the month is trustworthiness. Gaining the confidence of others by demonstrating integrity and reliability. That speaks volumes. I am here simply because we've been kicking the can down the road for many, many months concerning North Highland. The mayor and I have had extensive conversations, and I still don't get why, when y'all voted on whatever this is out here, the next day, equipment started moving. Simultaneously to, on the other side, equipment started moving. But what I get when it comes to North Highland? Well, we got to get bids, we got to get this, we got to get that, and so on and so forth. Did y'all make a decision on the Robinson house tonight after? There, there won't be a decision on, or it's just on the agenda just because? I know y'all can't answer that, because we come up here because we elected you as our districts. And every time something asked, "Mayor, do you have a response to that"? We don't dialogue, but we'll let the mayor do it. So sometimes, we want to talk to the ones we elected in our commi, in our districts. Another thing, and I'm about to sit down. A lot of conversation tonight about trucks and how long, and how old trucks are and how long you keep them. I've never heard in those conversations all this time. Maybe it's because it's election season. But I'll say this, and I see a lot of signs say, "Proven leader". So I'll leave you with this. Is it proven leader or proven liars?
Is there anyone further who wishes to speak this evening before we close out our meeting? We will move into our closing comments at this point. Mr. Mayor, do you have any closing comments? Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Um, quickly, I just want to thank, um, we had amazing time for Juneteenth, um, up at, uh, Matt Gray Park. And I just want to thank, want to give thanks to Chief Thompson and his police staff, uh, Ms. Kelly Carter and her staff, Mike Searls and the Toga County Rescue Squad, uh, David Bagley with the Toga County EMA, uh, Chief Bingham, uh, for his assistance. Uh, we had a great time. It was a wonderful day, uh, seeing everyone coming together, unified, having a good time, enjoying family, friends, food, good music, a good time. So I appreciate everyone that, um, helped us and insisted, and also, uh, Daniel Oakley and his staff. Thank you for your assistance in making that event a success. Um, also want to say, good to see Commissioner Stottum out here. Um, glad to see you still active and out and about. And hopefully, one day, you'll get your day of justice for what happened with you. So we're praying that, uh, that time will eventually come around and you'll have your day of justice and reckoning. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Just simply, I wish everybody a happy Fourth and a safe one as well. Thank you.
Counselor Merrick?
Uh, just to piggyback, yes. I hope everybody has a safe and happy Fourth of July. Please be safe on your travels.
Counselor Rayleigh?
Yes, um, I echo what they've, they've said about Fourth of July. I hope that we take an opportunity, um, to reflect on the freedoms that we have. Uh, we have the freedoms to, uh, sit up here and to make decisions, because people have the freedom to vote on the people who are elected to do that. Uh, we have, uh, the freedom to have a dialogue and not live, uh, in a, in a land where we're told what we're going to do, when we're going to do it. Sometimes people may feel like it's that way, but you have the freedom to come out and voice your opinion. And I hope that over the Fourth of July holiday, uh, while we're eating barbecue and, and ice cream and having fun, uh, that we can think about the freedoms that we have and reflect on that and thank those, uh, who have fought and stood on the line for those freedoms.
Counselor Stritchak? Happy Fourth, everyone. I hope that you, uh, take advantage of this long weekend, enjoy the time, think of those who came before us. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, July the 15th, 2025, at 6:00 P.M. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor, say yea? Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.